And I believe we are live.
All right, so if we're hot, I will, I'm gonna call this meeting in order. And I'm gonna declare, we've got a quorum, and we're gonna forego the pledge tonight. Welcome Sarah White to the council, we'll get to that a little bit later as far as the oath of office, but welcome her on to the panel this evening. All right, regular agenda, is there anything that we need to change on here? I am not aware of any, but anybody got anything? Then I'm going to accept the motion to approve the regular agenda as it is.
Second by Dave.
Chelsea and Dave, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Consent agenda. Anything on there that anybody had a question on, otherwise I think everything looked like it was supposed to.
Didn't look like anything out of order.
Okay.
Very normal. Most approve the consent agenda.
Hey, Brian makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on the number five, we got the approval of the city council minutes from the last go around. Did anybody see anything on there that was out of place or different than what you remembered? I didn't see anything, but. Yeah. If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve them minutes.
Brandon has a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Right, motion carries. Um, let's move on to the sheriff's update. I don't know, Brenton, did you get any notes from those guys this go around?
I do not have any update from the sheriff's department. Typically, if they could get, give them up maybe.
Okay, that's fine, I just didn't know, I hadn't heard of if they had actually had gotten with us yet, so. That's fine, we can, we can move on to number seven then.
If we have a little echo.
Sarah's gonna have to mute her, mute her. Or Brian, you should be able to do it too. There we go.
There we go, are we there?
Yes.
Yep. Playing around the technology here. Okay, as for the sheriff's update, we did not have any item. We leave a standing item if they do have anything. I would anticipate we'll have a report next, at the next meeting.
Right, okay.
Yep, and I have not heard anything different from them for the past week or two.
So, yeah, fine. We'll move on to seven then, go ahead Brenton, you got that one.
Okay. Next one here, at the last council meeting, council appointed Sarah White to fill the position remainder of the term until a special election can be held for former council member Corsonman seat. I'll give an update of that special election here in a little bit, but for now Sarah would be holding that seat until we had the election and then go from there. What we need to do is oath of office, I have Sarah in the room here, we're at city hall, and then Wendy in our office, she'll do the notary. So I'll read through those, both of office, have her repeat after me the oath, and then we'll have them her sign it and it'll get notarized and then it'll be in effect, so then she'll be able to vote or be acting as a council member until we have that special election, so. With that, Sarah will go through the oath of office here and just have you repeat after me, I Sarah White of Horace, North Dakota.
Hi Sarah White of Horace, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States. And that the constitution and the constitution of the state of North Dakota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Under pains and penalties per treat. So, but we'll do it like I said, we'll have Sarah sign that and Wendy will notarize it and we'll have that taken care of, so.
Welcome Sarah.
Welcome Sarah.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Welcome Sarah, and thank you for filling in that spot of John's for his absence, I appreciate that. Okay, so we'll move along to number eight, Brenton, if you want to give an update on where things are at with the special elections.
So what we have, we have under the update, we have, just so everybody understands, we have two separate special elections occurring. We gave an update at the last city council meeting, but it's the, we have more information now on the second special election. The first one, as you recall, is recall election and the filing period or period to be able to file beyond the ballot has passed. There are five candidates on that. The election will be held on March ninth at the fire hall from seven AM to seven PM. The second special election that we have now is initiated due to a petition submitted to have that, have a special election instead of just an appointment of the council member position. That's from when council member Corsonman resigned. Sarah is in that seat until the election. That election date will be April twentieth. Petitions to file for that seat are due February fifteenth. Now, February fifteenth, it does fall on a holiday, President's Day, I will be in and out, but I will be here before the deadline on that date. If anybody wants to stop by, you know, I would note where they could reach me if they do stop by before then, if I'm not in office, but I'll be in the office probably about half that day or that afternoon. Application or petitions are due on February fifteenth, like I said, that's a Monday by four PM. This would be just like the recall election, the total number of signatures, I believe, is forty-five signatures needed for that. For anybody who has, is wanting to be considered for that ballot. I always recommend to folks, if you're going to run, go get more than forty-five because in case the signature isn't considered valid or something, you still have it. But that's a quick recap of what we have for special elections. We could not combine these and that is due to notification requirements by sentry code of the filing period where folks can file to be on the ballot. So they could not be combined, also, these are different terms. Being council member, former council member Corsonman's position, now Sarah's position that would be up for the regular election in twenty twenty-two. So it has roughly a little over a year left on that term versus the other ones have about three, a little over three years left. So those are reasons why we have two elections, special elections that are going to be occurring.
Yeah.
Are there any questions on the update part?
No, I don't, anybody else have one, questions?
No.
The next part tied to this is an agreement for special elections. This agreement basically allows us to work with Cass County, Cass County has already started the process of getting the ballots prepared and to be able to process this. Once the petitions are filed for a special election, we work with Cass County, Cass County is the one that actually administers the election. The reason why is because they have all the equipment and the staff, the resources to be able to conduct that election versus like Horace, we don't have that equipment and capabilities like they do. It'll cost approximately five thousand dollars is the estimate that the county gave us for each election. There will be other costs, you know, that are indirect that the city takes on and the county takes on, so that isn't the true cost of election, it's just how much that we're going to be billed from the county, the county is not billing us staff time, they're charging us for the equipment use and printing, praying ballots, absentee ballots, mailing, postage, things like that. But they estimated that the cost would be around five thousand dollars. So what this agreement is, is like I said, for them to conduct the election process. Basically handle all the voting, processing the votes.
Yeah, okay.
And I, my understanding is this was to go to the county commission today, I have not been able to check to see outcome of it, but Mike Montlegerre and I did not anticipate any hiccups from the county on this.
No, I wouldn't expect it either, I mean, this is, this is kind of, it doesn't happen frequently, but it has happened, so just a procedure to go through. So, okay, anybody got any questions on this? Okay, so Brenton, what would you like from us, a motion to accept the agreement, is that what kind of what we're after here?
Yep.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes. They hear a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea did a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Sarah, you're muted, so we can't, we can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear her through mine?
I, it's hard to tell.
Okay, well, when she is talking, if she is talking, well, if you have a hard time here, let me know and we'll adjust the microphones.
All right, so Brenton, do you need me to come in tomorrow and sign that document then, so we can get that sent to the county, or what do we need to do?
We'll have some papers for you to sign, so.
Gotcha, all right. We'll square that up.
You do have items to sign anyways.
Fair enough, yeah, we'll just figure tomorrow sometime I'll stop in then and take care of it, so.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to nine. Becky's got that one, is she on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, in October, we, or the city made a commitment to the residents that they could pay off their special assessments interest free if they paid them off by the end of the year. And so what I have before you is a list of people who paid them off in December. Cass County, who does the record keeping and recording of our specials, were unable to make the twenty twenty portion that they paid on their taxes interest free, so they ended up paying a portion of interest through this process, so before you is a list of anybody that did pay and also ended up paying interest. And we're asking the council, the council to approve reimbursing total of eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents back the list of residents. And it would be covered by, in the fund, there's a default percentage of default that would be covered by small amount, so I don't think we'd have any problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any issues with this either, guys, any questions on this one? Think it's pretty well, it's pretty well explained, so. Was I gonna, go ahead Becky.
So if you want to approve the reimbursement, we just ask you to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of special assessment reimbursements.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, Brian does a motion, Dave does a second. Okay, I'm gonna roll call this one, guys, just so we're all on the, on the sheet, so. Sarah? Know if I can hear her.
I hear you.
We're trying to minimize the echo here, yes.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, it's, motion carries then, and yeah, okay, we'll get that squared away then, that's good. Thank you Becky for putting that together. Okay, Brenton on the number ten.
Well, you're out the mute here, so.
Yep, I know.
So what number ten is addressing noise ordinance. For this and another or, or another item, we'll be talking about item twelve, planner view fee. Basically, what I'm looking for is just your initial feedback. If you have any thoughts about this, let you know that we're looking at some adjustments and trying a little different approach of bringing out these ordinances to you a little bit before we have a proposed ordinance. If you have any feedback tied to us. In the noise ordinance, construction is exempt from the noise ordinance, it's pretty vague. And what we have had recently are complaints from some, some residents where builders or contractors are working later hours in the, in the evening. One was where a builder was framing homes, eight thirty, nine o'clock in the evening, and this is here just recently in the wintertime. And then another one where a subcontractor was siding the house. What the resident informed me was about eleven thirty, eleven forty-five at night. We've had concerns, you know, on occasion, we get concerns about construction noise, but being these late hours, we reviewed our ordinance to find out where some adjustments may need to be made, and like I said, what we found was construction is actually exempt in the noise ordinance. It doesn't define now residential or commercial or road or anything like that. So what we're looking at is for like residential construction where people are living, very nearby. Do we identify hours or time period where the noise ordinance does impact them or does affect them? Where, we've been having discussions with the home builder association. And like I said, we had some complaints from residents about the noise too. Home builder association, they're a bit surprised of no, you know, work occurring outside at those late hour, later hours at night, especially when it's dark around five o'clock right this time of year, so folks working multiple, you know, many hours past dark. So HBA wasn't really concerned with having some time limit, you know, that's to be applicable. Some ideas could be to have summer and fall hours or summer and winter hours, I mean, and differentiate when those would occur, or another approach could be, you know, sunrise to sunset or a little bit before sunrise to a little bit after sunset. Being that daylight in the summertime is different, you know, it doesn't get dark till nine thirty, ten o'clock in the summertime. So, looking for council feedback on that, and then I can continue discussion with groups such as the home builder association. What we want to make sure is that we're all on the same page of how to approach this ordinance, so we can have a good drafted revision to this ordinance to you in upcoming. So we're looking for feedback from the council on this.
I suppose one of the things, you know, we had talked about this before too, you know, the one hour after sunset. Summer, we're probably looking at, you know, ten fifteen, ten twenty. You know, for it to be shut down then, and then like in the winter here, you know, we're talking five thirty, you know, five fifteen. So, I'm not sure if that solves the issue either. Probably make it better than what it currently is, but you know.
I, I think that, you know, it's probably somebody's trying to sleep or his child is trying to sleep with the noise. So if it's, you know, ten thirty on, in the summer, then those kids are probably going to bed at eight, so it, it doesn't really help those people that have those kinds of concerns, and then since it does get dark so early in the wintertime, I mean, is it necessary to cut off the work that early?
That, that's what I mean, I don't.
Yeah. So maybe a set time, you know, like an eight o'clock when people start going to bed makes a little more sense.
I mean, I'm not that either, I'm just trying to, I mean, what's reasonable? I know everybody wants to get houses done, but I also want to make sure the residents can have some peace, quiet and who are not have, you know, constant with all the development that's going on as well, so. I don't know if other municipalities have got any type of an ordinance, well, I call it construction timeline. I don't know if the HBA had made any recommendations on that, either Brenton or if they had, well, I mean, I'm sure they'd like to go twenty-four seven. You know, but that's not, that's not reasonable either, so. I'm just trying to figure out what is a good, good number on this one.
Can I jump in here?
Yep, go.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Good, okay, I think we need to make a distinction between the types of construction that we have here. Commercial construction is very different than residential construction and, and being in the construction industry myself, there are times that roadwork and things like that in order to divert traffic may be better off being done in the middle of the night on like a main thoroughfare so as not to impact traffic versus residential construction, so. I guess hearing this, I, A, am very disappointed that a contractor would be doing outdoor work at eleven thirty at night, I think that's extremely disrespectful. Indoor work, very different, you know, go ahead, work, you work your butt off till two o'clock in the morning. But outdoor work, I think residential in a residential neighborhood should be limited. I know that I had a couple thoughts on this. You know, we, I'm an avid hunter and sometimes, you know, a half hour before sunset and a half hour after sundown makes sense. I agree with council member Chelsea saying that, you know, that might not be feasible in the winter because you have shortened daylight hours. So maybe if you look at a, a very common practice, you know, a nine o'clock or a ten o'clock, something like that for residential outdoor construction, then you would not put constraints on some type of commercial construction that may be happening in, let's say, a rural area where they're installing some water main or something like that. I'll go ahead and just pose that to the council and see what your thoughts are.
I was gonna, I was gonna state the same thing that Sarah is, it's, it's residential construction is definitely going to be different than commercial because we may have a situation where we have to hit a date that we have a contractor working on a road or something like that, and they may need to work almost twenty-four seven for say three or four days to get something done very quickly, and we at least can communicate to our residents that that's occurring. So yes, I, I would agree with both Chelsea and Sarah that we need to define a timeframe, we can't do sunset to sunrise or sun, sunrise to sunset type thing or around it because it changes so dramatically, but we should put some type of timeframe on it. We should state it's more around residential, the only thing that I think people are gonna probably pick at is what if I'm in a brand new development that has nobody living there? You know, if I want to run till ten o'clock at night and I'm not bothering anybody, but I think in time, you're just gonna be around other citizens or other houses that are gonna be close enough to hear it that we, I don't think that should be a challenge.
Okay. Brian, what do you think?
Great, I think, you know, everyone's making really good points, so. Some limitations need to be put on this.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, if I may chime in.
Go ahead.
So other jurisdictions do, you know, actual timeframes, and then they base the, the level of noise based on the residential, or the, the various zoning districts, so they do it that way, and then they do it based on various decibel levels that are allowed in that zoning district within a certain timeframe, and they have different timeframes, so it's basically a chart saying, you know, if it's this zoning district, the noise can go up to this decibel level between these hours, and, and so it's various, and that's kind of the point that, that you're all making or that you're getting into is that industrial is not the same as, commercial is not the same as residential.
Right.
The only thing I don't necessarily like about including decibels is that you then have to have a decibel meter reader, whatever, I, I don't remember what it's actually called, but you, the, the city would have to have that so they can actually determine, you know, what are the decibels being emitted from whatever the activity is, so that kind of will, will complicate the issue, but that is something that other jurisdictions do to control noise.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I can see that too, that would be, and I guess be subjective to when you're talking decibels as far as what's considered. You know, where's the nuisance start? So.
So, are you saying Lucas having a noise ordinance for the contractors similar to what any other person would have to follow, or would you separate contractors out?
It would, everyone would have to follow it, you know, and there's certain exemptions that apply in those other jurisdictions. Construction isn't one of them, the, the exemptions are limited more to like emergency services. If there is an instance where let's say, you know, a previous example was construction that needs to be done on a road late at night, all that would happen is that construction company would just apply for a, a special permit from the city. And the city would then grant that permit saying, okay, you can make noise between these hours in this area between these days, you can get your construction done, so there's exemptions for that through that special permit, but the, the exemptions for like all the time is, is very limited. And that's for like emergency services, so when an ambulance goes by, you know, obviously they're not gonna get a special permit every time they're trying to, to run their, their ambulance, so. That's kind of how it's addressed in other jurisdictions.
So how come, you know, when Brent, when you kind of presented this, it was, we don't have any things specific on for contractors, but if we have noise ordinances for everybody, wouldn't they have to follow those as well?
They're, they have, Horace has an exemption for construction.
Oh, okay, it's.
That's what separates it from the other jurisdictions is that Horace, the ordinance still allow us for construction to be exempt from the.
Okay, yeah.
Entire chapter, basically.
We're just very broad with construction is what we're stating, you're stating correct?
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our ordinance is just very broad, and like I said, it doesn't define out what type of construction noise or anything, it just says construction. So in this situation, we're looking at, okay, should we call out residential construction, or should we you know, look at it from a different angle, what feedback does council have on that, and you know, staff, we could look at the decibel approach, I have, I have seen what Lucas is talking about there. We could do something like that, or, but that would probably be a more significant overhaul ordinance, which is very possible. Or we could just specify timeframes for, you know, that specific activity or something within that and just update ordinance that way, so.
Is there something that can be done? Okay, is there something that can be done, maybe? I, I don't know if, if this really would fit industrial or commercial construction, roads, pipelines, things like that. I think that this is more adapted to residential construction, but obviously, we can't pick on a residential contractor, so maybe we look at a proximity in lieu of a decibel level where you'd actually have to have a piece of test equipment. Proximity would be a lot easier to justify for construction, and then that would be something that might envelop some other trades for outdoor work. I don't think when you get to the end of building a house and you're absolutely frantic trying to get it knocked down so you can hit a deadline, we want to limit painters and, you know, cabinet guys and stuff like that, I think this is more to eliminate the people that really lack common sense frankly, and are swinging hammers at eleven thirty at night in a residential area.
Yep, I would agree. So. Okay. Brenton, does that give you some? I'll say, I'll, I'll put clarity in quotes, but I mean, just some ideas on where we think we should probably go with this ordinance and maybe put some some wording behind it, or do you need some more clarification on our part?
I think we have a good idea where we could throw a draft.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll work with Lucas and staff here and we'll bring forward a draft here at upcoming meeting in February. But I think we have a good idea what would be of interest to you.
And this, this is gonna be important, not only, you know, for the wintertime while school's in session, but it's gonna be important as home construction kicks into high gear in the spring and summer too, so. We, if we don't have this kind of ordinance in place, it makes sense for us to at least get the framework in place.
Yeah, we, we anticipate building permits are gonna be easily double what they were last year for a new home construction, it could be even higher, so based on. So based on indications that we've had from builders already. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if we would meet next year or last year's numbers for new homes, probably by midsummer. So, Elias, that's what's been indicated from the building community to us so far. So to address this, this time, you know, earlier on would be helpful, so we hopefully can prevent some issues this summer. Or make, and make it easier for our deputies to be able to. They could, they could address an issue through disorderly conduct, but that's a lot more difficult than just having the noise ordinance. Straight up to where they can cite to be more specific.
Right, okay. Alright, so we're good there for now. I think like I said, we got some framework we can start working with here, put, put together something to, uh. Help with this situation, so let's uh move on to number eleven, then go ahead with your update on that one.
Okay, next item here, land use ordinance consultant selection. Uh, as you know, we're tackling uh the land use ordinance or working towards getting that a consultant for that. We had RFQ, we had six responses or six consulting firms respond. Some of these firms were teams, some were individual firms. Uh, of the six, four were selected for interviews. Uh, we had a committee that did the interviews for that consisting of playing commissioners. Uh, like officials were able to be on there and some staff. Of the four that were selected, uh, that interview committee met a second time. Where it was down, it was shortlisted down to two more or two of those four. And as right now, they're down to one, or they're down to one, their recommendation is a firm called. Giffords Webster. Uh, they do specialize in working with communities such as Horace. In doing land use ordinances, updates, uh, things like that. They have extensive experience with that and they're a very reputable firm. It was pretty tough decision from the review committee, but like I said, they felt Giffords Webster matched most accurately. What we're looking for and how we had. Make sure this ordinance is for Horace, not just copy pasting and other community approach. So, uh, over the next month, month and a half, we'll be working with Giffords Webster to. Get that con, get the contract together and then we'll be coming back to council. Once that contract is ready to go, we'll bring that back to council, uh, so we get approval of the contract and then move forward with the project. Uh, we do anticipate that this project is going to be about a year, year and a half long project. Uh, could be longer, but depending on. The public involvement component is what makes it typically longer, which is fine with us. We wanna make sure that we have uh public involvement for this project.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, anybody got any questions on that one? So, yep, we'll just keep that one moving along, cause that's, that's a big one for us right now as well to get those updated. So that we're current and not. Some older times that aren't necessary anymore for that, so.
Yep.
Alright, Brent, you got number twelve then too.
Okay, the next one is regards to a plan review, plan review fee. When somebody wants to build a structure, I'll even keep it vague even from there. But structure being a house, a new business, the schools, anything in town, they have to obviously get a building permit. Uh, on top of the building, so there's a building permit cost that the contractor has to take on. But then there's also a plan review and there's a fee tied to that, or ordinance requires that the plan review fee is sixty-five percent. Addition, in addition to the building permit. So the building permit, let's say it's a thousand dollars, the plan review fee would be six hundred fifty dollars. We've had some concerns brought to us from contractors and builders that. Uh, they think their building, their plan review fee is too high. We have done a comparison of other communities within the metro and, you know, within roughly an hour drive. And what we're finding is that some communities are at sixty-five percent. Take like the community of Wapperton, Wapperton is sixty-five percent. You look at West Fargo, they're twenty-five. Uh, Morehead, my understanding is twenty-five percent for them, Fargo is twenty percent. So it does vary, the metro, uh, if we, you know, with even consult, you know, having a consultant straight up. Without counting our costs. That we're looking at around twenty-five percent also. If we were to revisit this plan review fee, I could see where we could lower that fee a little bit. Get it down, running at forty to thirty-five percent. Cause like I said, we do have costs still, even if we are to outsource plan review for a building. We still have costs tied to it, such as the engineer time, our building inspector time, community development time. Uh, any other staff time tied to it. So we do have costs tied to plan reviews. And a lot of times when you're looking at like commercial buildings, for example, they have a lot more extensive plan review. Um, but they're also bigger dollar projects typically. We've looked at, would it make sense to do a sliding scale? Uh, a sliding scale, we already have that concept reflected within the building permit approach. So. It'd probably not be as beneficial doing a sliding scale since we are reflecting that on how we do our building permit. Uh, it's really, just going, does the council want to entertain this plan review fee adjustment? And if so, if you have a general idea where you'd like it to fall, my suggestion would be right around that thirty-five or forty percent. Like I said, so we could cover our cost, make sure that we always cover our costs with any plan review associated with it. So. If we do have any changes to that, that would be reflected within ordinance. And then we would update our resolution of fees also to reflect that. But we want to make sure we have a conversation of that. We've had some just initial conversations with some of the larger permit. Uh, takers or, because those concerns were um brought to us from them. Uh, like the school district, for example, uh, Home Builder Association, they've all brought these, their concern up a little bit of our costs. Uh, the, this is the one area that I believe that we're higher than other communities on. The other areas, I think we're not far off.
Right, so I think one of the things too, cause I said in on some of those meetings as well. Um, what we wanna do too is like Britain, uh, mentioned here, we, we wanna make sure that our costs are covered. Because we don't wanna have to be taking that out of, you know, the general fund handles this for a plan review fee. That should be handled by, you know, development. So we wanna, you know, we're not here to gouge anybody, but we are here to cover costs. So I think a review of this is probably very prudent. Um, it seemed like when we were talking about this at a forty percent was about, you know, somewhere between thirty-five and forty percent. Was gonna be about where all this landed so that our costs were covered. But we're still gonna have to go through and do a little bit more, you know, cost analysis on this, but that was the initial blush anyway and what it looked like. So that's, that's where a lot of.
I, I, I would say the aspect of this is that there's gonna be some plan reviews that are gonna have a higher complexity. Then other home reviews, right? So I, 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 I think we need to take a look at a sliding scale or, you know, depending on the type of construction that's going on. You know, it, it, obviously if it's a commercial building, there are different regulations and, and we will have to do different, you know, apply different. Uh, reviews that might be happening by a contractor versus somebody on staff. It would be doing that, so the cost or fee structure may be different than if, uh, we're just doing a plan of view for a, a residential construction. Or a multifamily home, house, right? So I, I, I think we do need to have a, a, a review of this to make sure, you know, obviously we're not in this to try and make money. Uh, we're trying to cover our costs, uh, so we've gotta take a look at this and, and say, okay, let's make sure that it's in line with. Not only just in line with what are the communities are charging, but you know, what, what the actual costs are going to be and make sure that, that's what we're, what we're doing.
Right, so, just. Dave, hang on a second, just so everybody understands, this has been in the ordinances for an awful long time. This wasn't something that just came up magically within the last five years. This has been there for a long time. Um, and so now it's, again, it's that time to probably review some of these things that are, that may not be in line any longer. Go ahead, Dave, sorry to mean interrupt, yeah.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, no, I, I was gonna say, um, I had thought about the sliding scale, but. I think that gets confusing and based on what Brenton had said as well, is that if we just do a percentage based on the value. As the value of the, of the, of the, um, type of, um. Property or whichever plan review you're doing goes up, you're gonna cover, I think, most of our costs. So my recommendation would generally be in that thirty-five to forty percent or wherever that fits within how we're covering our cost after we do an analysis. The only way I would do a potential sliding scale is if it was maybe a separated residential versus. Versus commercial, because they can get more complex, but try and keep if we do something like that very simple, you know. Um, the only other concern I have is if we're stating this is a. A, a fee that's put on top of a building permit. So if I come in and I wanna do a building permit for a ten by ten bill, uh, shed, right? And say that's a. A hundred dollar, um, permit fee, you're stating I'm gonna pay an additional thirty-five to forty dollars on top of that for that type of plan fee, plan review, correct?
That's correct.
That's where I'm starting to think is that, that gets a little much. So that would be my only place to say have a bottom value or something if that makes it easy. But I don't want it to get too complex with a.
So like a new home, a new home would have the building, the, depend on their location, obviously too. But, uh, they would have the building permit in a plan review fee. And then also when a new home is getting constructed, uh, they would have a street bond, they have to put a thousand dollar street bond. If the builder doesn't damage our street during the construction of that home, then they're able to get that bond back. If they do damage the street, you know, our C engineer, they'll go through, evaluate street after the project, after that house is done. And go, okay, is the street damaged? If it is, they assess how much it costs to repair. And then give a recommendation of how much we would keep that bond. So that is one opportunity where a builder can get some of that cost back. And then on top of that, if they are in the water area, they pay a connection charge. So if they're a horse, say a horse wire customer, they pay a connection charge and then same thing for sewer, they would have that connection also. But when you can, when you look at the building permit and plan review fee. We are a little higher, but our plan review is where it's really. The hot, the bigger discrepancy of cost. The building permits, we reassessed those about a year and a half, two years ago. So they're not really too far off from where the other communities are in their metro. It's just the plan review fee that is working out.
Anybody else?
Um, this is very interesting and as a, a new person, I'd be interested to understand. Um, the structure just a little better and the reason I say that is because I can understand as a developer. Or a home builder or a home buyer, depending on if they're building their own home, how frustrating that would be. Um, especially in the event of a, you know, let's say a, a Jordal or a platinum or something like that. Where they pay one set fee in West Fargo, five miles north of here, and yet they come to our little community and pay. Uh, substantially more, so it affects their home prices and whatnot. Um, getting back to the question I have, who does the plan review? So residential plan reviews, I'm assuming we do in-house. Can someone tell me who does that?
Brendan, go ahead.
They're muted, Brent.
Yeah, we had to do a shuffling here, so. So who pays for, or who does the plan review? Residential typically, our staff does plan review. Commercial, the smaller commercial will do. And the bigger commercial or industrial, we outsource. Or if it is a more extensive, uh, just has a lot of. More technicalities to review, then that's typically outsourced. So, uh, the schools, for example, was a combination of we outsource, but we also were heavily involved with that plan review. That was a very big project. Uh, I actually am looking at some future plans here for another, you know, the elementary school and, I mean, they're, they're definite size to them. Uh, they take quite a bit of time to review. High school, uh, took quite a bit of time to review also. So like I said, the bigger commercial, industrial, we outsource that with our involvement. And then the smaller commercial, we'll typically handle where staff is available. Uh, if we're swamped with residential, then the commercial is typically what's also outsourced, cause that does take more time of our staff.
Thank you.
If any other questions, guys, or any other concerns on this one?
I'll just note that, you know, being that our fees would be a little bit. Higher than our neighbors. Um, I feel like, you know, we hear so much hardship from our residents of. You know, having to pay to fix our roads and, and handle some of these growing pains and especially. From, you know, older residents that are on a fixed income that, you know, a lot of them have, have been here for forty years. And, and so having our fee a little bit higher, if it means that that helps. Um, with some of this growth pay for itself, then I can, I can be on that, on that train. I mean, I, I think it's, it's really important that we make sure we're covered well and that we're not. You know, taking money from our taxpayers to cover these jobs, these bigger new, these new jobs.
Right, and Chelsea, that's exactly it, you know, the, the homes, the, the homes are probably a little easier, cause we, that's kind of, you know. I would say it's a pattern. When we start doing some of these larger commercials like the school and things like that, that's gonna take a little bit more time. We wanna make sure that for those larger projects, that our time and effort is covered. For those projects so that we don't go into the general fund to have to, you know, cover some of this stuff. So that's why we wanna make sure that we do this right and we do, you know, do some more cost analysis on this. Um, to make sure that we are charging correctly for our situation. Because, yeah, even though our, our format might be a little different or a little higher than what West Fargo, our situation's a little different as well. So we have to keep that in mind too. So, um, but I agree with you. I mean, I wanna make sure that our costs are covered from one end of the spectrum, right down to the other. So.
And making sure that people know when they come here and file for a permit, that these are our costs right up front. This is what they can expect.
Correct, yep. No hidden fees, all there. So. Okay, anybody got anything else they wanna add in on this one?
What we'll do from the staff side is we'll take this information, we'll, uh, come back with a proposal for council to consider. Of how we would handle any adjustments to plan review.
Yeah. No, good. I think, like I said, I think we can, we'll, we'll be able to see that what our cost analysis is on the, on the high end and then on the. On the residential as well, you know, commercial and residential, so I think that'll be good. I think it's a, it's a good exercise. We should go through it and, and see where we wind up. So. Alright, anything else on that one, Brent? Otherwise we'll move on to the next one.
No, nothing on that one.
Okay, so we'll go to thirteen then on the water projects. I don't know, if you or Jim wanna pick those up?
I'll, I'll touch base really quick and I've asked Jim to fill in the gaps, cause I know all, I'm just covering the high level. And he, he has been working with one of their other engineers in your state to be in the details. This update on this year's water projects, we're trying to tackle, uh, the two projects that we have is one connection to Caserole. And then the other one is new waterline, basically waterline replacements, new wirelines. Uh, that is a pretty good overhaul of our system, uh, for that project and both of them are pretty good sized projects. We have been seeking out funding through the state water commission. That's the, your typical approach that you'd go to for any water project funding. Is the state water commission. The reason why is because they control grant funds from the state and through Fed. Uh, the federal government to be able to help make these water projects happen. If a project isn't selected for that, it gets you in the pipeline easier for low interest loans. And that's another option we've been looking, we've looked at. Uh, but obviously we're pursuing the grant dollars as aggressively as possible. Just so folks understand too, these grant dollars, the low interest loans, there was a period of time. Or a couple of years ago and we've just recently been, it was that, well, that late last summer. We're given the green light again to where we could seek these dollars. We were not able to apply. For a lot of the, for the low interest loans, or some of these grant dollars from the angle of. We didn't have a clean audit. We've cleaned up our audit to the point that. The auditors ideally, they actually had two different findings. If we recall, they had two different findings. Or opinions, I mean, not findings, opinions of our city's financials from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. That's not common to have two different opinions and it was the change from eighteen to nineteen was for the good. That change was enough to get the North Coast Public Finance Authority willing to let us. Be eligible for these funds again. That is a big deal. So we are pursuing grant dollars. We are pursuing low interest loans for these projects if we need to or whenever we need to. The state water commission had a. Subcommittee meeting last week. I apologize, Jim, couldn't remember the exact name of it, but basically a committee that reviews all the projects are. Up for, that have applied for funding through the state. Our understanding is there is significantly more money available than projects that were submitted. Our understanding is our projects are eligible and we're seeking out these funds. To hopefully cut down on their cost of the projects and what it would cost us either through the utility or low interest loan. Or any other means. We're trying to make that be less of a cost on the city, obviously. The wire topics or the water group, not wire topics, the subcommittee, they reviewed all of the projects, they discussed them. For the horse projects, they decided to recommend to the state water commission. Funding the preliminary engineering, so our engineering work. And then for us to come back at their April meeting, seeking out the construction dollars. We're. We're glad to see that they'd be funding, you know, the desire recommending the funding. We really wish that they would have recommended the design work or preliminary engineering. And the construction all in one shot, but if we have to go back to them, we have to go back to them. We will be reaching out to the water commission or some of our legislators, encouraging them. How important these projects are to our community and we have already expressed that to our legislators and we'll do it again. But. Like I said, just an update for the council where we're at on those projects. Jim could elaborate on the details or fill any gaps I had on there. I asked him just before the meeting started, right, meeting started, if he could. Take a look at the numbers because he would probably have better grasp of those numbers off top his head or had a chance to look them up here, but I said. They had more money than what. Projects were applied for, and I think that helps us quite a bit in being considered for the funding also. Jim, do you have anything else to add on it?
I do. So like you said, Brenton, Water Improvement District twenty twenty-six. Was sent to the state water commission of some appropriations committee. And they are recommending that they approve to the state water commission. Preliminary engineering in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would be the cap for that. That would get it to final design. For Water Improvement District twenty twenty-seven, which is a connection to Caserole. They are recommending a hundred and one thousand dollars to the state water commission for their approval at their February meeting. In discussions today with one of the state water commission staff members. They indicated that this is kind of a new territory for the state water commission. Having approved the planning first and then the construction at a later date. A couple of the projects that was, that were before ours. Had construction of twenty twenty-two and that's where I think the subcommittee kind of. How much do we want to appropriate right out of the chute if this isn't going to be constructed until twenty twenty-two? So we had some hope going into our projects that we want a twenty twenty-one construction completion. That they would see that and they just acted the same as the projects in front of them. So I talked with. With one of their staff members today, like I said, and I asked, does this mean that we're good for construction, do you think? And she was. Pretty hesitant, not, not understand, or understandably to give me any yes or no, because it does depend on the state water commission. So. It does add another hurdle. We do have to go back to them for their. April meeting at the earliest, that will be their next meeting is provided they approve everything at their February meeting. And if we don't, aren't able, or they table it or something would happen at their. April meeting, it would be a June meeting. I really would not want to delay this project starting until June. And I emphasized that to her today and like she said, I understand, but I, I can only do so much. It's up to the state water commission, how they want to do it. So. Apparently she said this is the way they've done it in the past. They've kind of gotten out of that where they were funding the preliminary and then the construction, but. The subcommittee did want to see projects that were. Closer to bidding or had already bid. So we're going to be getting it as close as we can and get the information to them. She did tell me that we would be able to. Submit it. By their deadline, they require everything forty-five days before their meeting. So it's kind of a long lead time. That we'd be able to submit everything and then update it as we got closer if our, if we would have more information to add to it. So. That's a kind of a summary of what we got out of them, but there was very little discussion over it. There's just a couple of things. So. I think they are pretty favorable projects to the state water commission.
Jim, I have, or Jim and Brenton, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So when you stated the, the design fees, that type of stuff, are you stating that the water commission is recommending covering those a hundred percent?
It would be a cost share. So for twenty twenty-six would be sixty percent and this details will get ironed out next week. Or next month at their meeting and typically it's sixty forty. I have heard some rumors that it might be less. We, we don't know yet. And then the other project is, it falls under a different category. So it'd be seventy-five, twenty-five on that one. So.
So the, the. So what you're stating is then typically the sixty forty, where sixty is from the state and we cover forty. But you're stating one of the other projects would be seventy-five from the state and we would cover twenty-five. Is that a correct statement?
Yep, yep. The connection to Caserole has a lot harder, higher percentage for cost share. It's a regionalization of a, of a water.
Okay. Well, that's the, that's very good because I thought it was all going to be sixty forty, but I just want to make sure we're clear that it's a six, generally it's a sixty forty split. And then we still have to find funding for the others. And Brenton, is it true that we can potentially use then those low interest loans to get that additional dollar figure?
Our ideal situation would be to use the low interest loans. So there's, there's a couple of different avenues that we go. Obviously we pursue the low interest loans. That would be the first avenue. Another option would be we have some diversion settlement money that we might be able to put towards this and. Our overall goal is to make it to where the water utility, your water rates pay for this. Trying to avoid going any other route possible.
Right. So if you're able to get the low interest loans, the goal is the water rate. Will help service that debt and we will not special assess to any of our residents.
Yes, that is our goal.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
I want to stress that, like I said, what Jim said, the cost shares, those are, that's following what they would conventionally do. We are going to urge them to follow that, their typical approach. And the other thing I want to point out is that we are. We have brought this up. Mayor Peterson and I have brought this up and Councilor Phil along with our legislators. We are in district twenty-two. We have great legislators representing us and we have. Express our concerns of, in need of these projects to them. And we will continue to do so through legislative session, the stress how important these are. Because we know that they're in there, you know, they're batting for us and we want to make sure that. They can help wherever possible. So this isn't just. Talked to a couple of people, state, state wire commission or their staff that's. Talking to quite a few folks, even this mark to stress the importance of these projects.
Definitely. Okay, Jim, Brent, you got anything else guys want to add in there? I think. We'll just keep, we'll just keep talking to people and make sure we can keep this moving.
We'll keep you posted as we hear more info, so.
Okay, sounds good. Jim, why don't we go with fourteen then?
All right, Mr. Mayor. We'll start by running through. Some of the design projects that we got in the pipeline right now. First one is Southville Farms Third Edition. This is the residential subdivision. South of sixty-fourth avenue, north of Southville Farms First. We're working on storm sewer meeting with the developer. On what amenities they want around a storm sewer pond and some other general design, but plan preparation is ongoing. Plan is to bid that one here early in the. Spring. The next two are both the water projects. We talked about that. They're both presented to the state water commission subcommittee. They will be recommended for preliminary. Funding, like I said earlier. We did meet last Tuesday night with a resident of Chestnut, tried to look that over again, show that area a little bit of. Support. We've started that project and we've stopped that project and we've started that project and we've stopped that project. So. We met out on site, we walked around a little bit, looked at some areas. Developed a list of problems that we are trying to address. And the consensus from that meeting was we're going to update our costs. Based on the problems that we saw and agreed upon and we're going to prepare a rehabilitation type project. Not a reconstruction, but a rehabilitation. So. We have worked with public works to identify those areas that are deficient. Some of those problems that are out there, they range from. Sanitary sewer infiltration in the lines through some pumps, through leaky joints. Dog houses on pipes and manholes that are leaking. Under, undersized storm sewer lift pump station. Settling curb. Storm sewer pipe that's not very deep, so it's starting to float a little bit. There's. One inlet lead just on the. North loop where it's pretty good speed bump right now and. Who are into the resident, it's calmed down. It used to be worse, so. But so anyways, we're going to prepare an estimate for that and a breakdown. And get that back to those residents to see if something that they could get behind. Terragard is third edition. I have been seeing some. Conversations about developers agreement costs and the project on that, that is being designed by the developer. Or by the developers engineer. So at the next meeting, we'll have the preliminary engineer report for your review and approval. We are meeting next. Tuesday with Cass County on seventy-sixth avenue from sixty-third street east. As you are aware, we discussed this in the past, the plan on bidding this project the middle of February. There are some things that we have to work out, including a memorandum or an MOU with county. And some of the others more specifics, shared use path lighting and storm sewer. We will discuss that next Tuesday with, with them. As far as construction is concerned, most of the projects are, are. In the hold now until winter's over till the spring, but we did meet last week Wednesday. To discuss the sizable amount of liquidated damages on the projects around the school. We discussed. Identifying those liquidated damages and coming forth with contractor and discussing those. The plan is to meet yet this week on those and bring forth something potentially at your meeting in two weeks. So that's what I have as far as design and construction. The next thing on our list is neighborhood dewatering. Yes, Sarah.
Quick question. So that I understand the Chestnut area. The issues and deficiencies that they're having, is that simply due to age of?
No, it's not. It's, it's due to a, a numerous things. One is construction back in the day. Like I said, there's some dog houses. So where the pipe enters a manhole, they use expandable foam and it leaks like a sieve, basically it. It doesn't seal it up very well. There's some humps in the storm sewer where the pipe is floated. There's very high groundwater in that area, which leads to excessive II infiltration and inflow in the sanitary sewer. So there's some. If you use a manufactured joint to put in a service for a house, service line. It's typically watertight, but if you just go out there and take a sawzall to it and then throw a pipe on it and put a bunch of concrete around it. Over time, that tends to leak and we have seen some evidence of that. And then it's, it's a lot of surface drainage around there and with the high water table and a lot of some pumps. What doesn't get pumped into the sanitary sewer gets pumped out into the street and it tends to just sit there. And when it sits on the asphalt, it just degrades the asphalt and we've seen a lot of deterioration in there. So one of the things that we've talked about with internally and we're proposing to the residents is if a, a street typically has a two percent crown to it. We're going to say, we're going to propose a three percent crown to force that water off the road and keep it in the concrete curving gutter. Concrete is much more friendly to, to water sitting on it than asphalt is. So. Items like that. This isn't so much of an age. This is a. Two nineteen ninety-eight, I want to say, eight ninety-eight, ninety-nine was when the subdivision was put in. It's just had its fair share of, of. Things that aren't working right and we're trying to remedy that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing I had on there was neighboring dewatering, neighborhood dewatering, excuse me. So Public Works had reached out to Kindred and Kindred has some dewatering wells installed in neighborhoods. And they do a neighborhood wide dewatering. To success, they've, we talked to the company that installed them and Adam has talked to the public works down there and. They've been working and they've been working pretty well. So. We, as public works and, and the administration, we've sat down and talked about this. The potential for installing the watering wells in the areas of Chestnut Ironwood. Adelman's Edition and Dreamfields. Adelman's has been a drainage issue for, since the beginning. Dreamfields has got storm sewer, but it's still got a relatively high water table out there. And Chestnut Ironwood, like we had just talked about, that's a lot of sand. There's a sand vein that runs through there. What Watersmith, that's the company out of West Fargo who did the work in Kindred. Recommended was drilling a. Test well in each of those subdivisions. And getting a flow rate, seeing what kind of waters there, what we could get out of it. So. Stu did present us with a proposal from a drilling company. And. Basically what it is, is. Fourteen thousand dollars total, three wells. Six inch PVC wells at a forty-five hundred dollars and then one five hundred dollar lot. Per hole additional and they're figuring they probably have one of those through a total of fourteen thousand dollars. They also. Brought a well drillers report or provided us with a well drillers report of an area close to. Adelman's Edition. And. When they drilled that well. In. Nineteen ninety-five, the water level was determined to be nine feet below the surface. And after eight hours of pumping, they gained. Two feet. They lowered the water table there two feet and that was pumping at fifteen gallons per minute. So. They felt pretty confident that you could do that in that area. So. As you might recall, there's been a lot of ice buildup on the newer subdivisions, street deterioration in the. Chestnut Ironwood area. So this is a. Option to go forward to try to lower the water table in that area and control. The water that gets pumped into the right of way and any deterioration that may be happening to either the sanitary sewer system, storm sewer system or the streets. So. I don't know, Brenton, did you see the memo I sent you today or?
Just briefly. But like I said, Jim summarized it quite a bit there. One thing I do want to mention is. If you ask how we pay for it, our suggestion would be, recommendation from staff would be. To pay for this through our sales tax dollars is obviously there for infrastructure and this would be a good project. That would have quite a bit of. Help expect, one of our more. Common issues in town, which is some pumps by lowering this. Yeah, by lowering this, if we're able to succeed in able, lowering the wire table down a little there, this area down. Uh, people sometimes wouldn't be running as much, which would save quite a few issue or mitigate quite a few issues that we're having in town. And this isn't uncommon for the whole region.
So would they do this work physically right now, Jim, or is this something that would be done in the spring?
It's weather dependent. When we talked last week, they're still drilling, but he said if it turns to be ten degrees below zero or zero, he said, I I can't ask the well drillers to do that. So all I wanted from, from Stu, we met late last week, he wasn't able to meet with us earlier or he, we met earlier, but he wasn't able to get me any information till late last week. Um, it just depends on what the weather, what the weather does. So I wanted to get something to bring to you guys just to keep things moving forward. Or keep it moving.
So the, the wells pump the water out, lower the table and then where do they put the water?
So right now, Ironwood and Chestnut, we would put into the storm sewer. So we'd pump it up and put in the storm sewer and pump it out to the river. Dreamfields has a stormwater retention pond, so we could pump it into there and then we pumped out to the diversion. Edelman Edition, we're still contemplating where we would put it and what we would do with it. There is a spillway that was just cleaned out this summer. That we could pump into that goes into the storm sewer or we could go right to the storm sewer. It, it all depends on where you hit water, you know, drillers aren't gonna, they'll tell you, I've, I hit it here and six feet over, I missed it. It's kind of spotty. So it kind of depends on where we would hit that water and get a good enough producing well to, to do something. To lower that water table. So we'd have to do some more work on elements, but the other two of the storm sewer is there to help get it into.
And those, um, pretty much just constantly run then?
They do, yep. So Kindred's run constantly and you can tell from what Adam told me, Rich told him that you can definitely tell when they've been turned off because all of a sudden people, some pumps are start running. And you'll start seeing more excessive runtimes in his, in his lift, sanitary lift stations, just some people pumping.
Yeah, that's just it, you know, so. Yeah, be interesting to see then what, uh, we can come up with on that, but like you said, if it's working down in Kindred, it's certainly something we should explore a little bit and see if we can help with some of that, uh, the wa- the water issue that we're seeing up there. Was it something we can take action on tonight or do we need more information? Do you feel, Corey? Jim, I think we need, we need a little bit more kind of like a formal, uh, or do you want to just go with the fourteen grand tonight to get that started? To get the, to get the, uh, the holes dug and start at least seeing where this goes?
Yeah, it's not an action item on the agenda. We, I didn't honestly think I was going to have anything for you in time, but since we did, I talked to Brenton and he said, shoot it over, let's talk about it and, and we can go from there. So it can wait two weeks. I don't think it's that big of a deal.
Okay, but what I would say is if you are comfortable approving that fourteen, you can, otherwise it will come back to you in two weeks, either one.
Let's come back to it in two weeks. I think everybody's probably get a little bit more familiar with what this is about and what we're trying to do here. And then let's talk about it in a couple of weeks, okay?
Yep.
So we, Jim, you've received a formal proposal?
I've received an email with a, with a proposal on it, yep.
Good.
So that's something that we can talk about and maybe, and so everybody can get a better handle on what the process that we're looking at doing here. And what the hope with this project is and what we're trying to do. So then we could probably just go over that again in a couple of weeks. So everybody's aware of what we're planning to do here. All right, does anybody have anything else that they, on this questions for Jim? Okay, if not, we'll move on to fifteen then. Brenton, you go ahead and pick that up.
Okay. On general update, I don't have any items there. Going into special assessment policy. Uh, we are working with the firm called Stan Tech on developing a special assessment policy. Uh, we are looking at having our first public meeting, uh, most likely early February. Uh, we are working with the consultant to get narrow down the time, date, everything. Most likely looking at Thursday, the first or second Thursday of the month is most likely what we'd be looking at. Uh, but we also have to make sure it works schedule wise and availability wise. Uh, for a meeting location or if we do it all virtually. Uh, we originally planned doing all these meetings virtually. Last week, Governor Burgum did, uh, remove all the restrictions. Now there are guidelines in regards to masks, room capacity, things like that. Uh, if we do have a meeting in person, we're still going to ask that people wear masks at the meeting. Uh, we will have horse masks available for folks if they want, if they forgot a mask or if they want a city of horse one, you're more welcome to have them. And we'll still encourage social distancing. But we are looking at options there. Like I said, Burg- Governor Burgum did revise the restrictions to guidelines starting effective yesterday morning. So we are, like I said, we're getting, looking at having the first public meeting for a special assessment policy discussion early February. The other item I had is regards to rapid testing for COVID nineteen. Uh, the state has informed all the cities that, or North Dakota League of Cities in the state are working together. Uh, being able to give us basically any rapid tests that we need. Uh, we're looking at having, uh, rapid testing events in town, working with the fire department. I've been working with the, or horse fire, real fires, uh, new fire chief. And we're looking at a week, I want to say it was the second week in February. Let's double check my email here from February eighth through twelfth, we're looking at, uh, establishing a date for that. Most likely be a round out like a four hour time period, like three to seven or something like that, where folks will be able to stop by. Uh, we're looking at the, having at the fire hall, but we may look at other, another location depending on what we anticipate turnout could be. But they'd be able to come by, do a quick test and then within roughly fifteen, twenty minutes. Uh, they'd be getting the results back saying if they tested positive or negative. Um, the state used a, some of the cares dollars and were able to purchase many of these tests and they're making them available to the cities to where we got these testing events for free. So, uh, like I said, we're looking at doing this early February between eighth and twelfth. And the team up with fire department will have a date, our goal is to have a date announced here before the end of the week.
Yep, good, that sounds good. Yeah, that was a good call that we had with the, with the governor on that. Um, so I'm glad they're doing, that they're going to be able to hand out testing to the other communities as well, so. Um, we'll, uh, we'll get more information out as we get some of these dates finalized a little bit more, so. Brenton, you got anything else or is that it?
Nope, that's it. I'll keep it short tonight.
Okay, all right, move on.
I'm really excited. I'm really excited that we can make this a joint venture with our local fire department. Those, uh, those folks do a lot for us and what an amazing opportunity to work with such an important entity in our community. Excellent.
Yep, yep. It's good synergies there too for this type of, uh, exercise, so this is, this will work out well. All right, we'll move on to portfolio reports. Um, just got a couple of things. Last Thursday, um, the metro did a state of the cities through the FM chamber. We did that at the, uh, Delta by Marriott, which is, or there by West Acres. It was interesting because it was a very large hall and there was only about thirty-five people in there just because they did a virtual one. So the mayors were up on the stage, they, we had predefined questions for, uh, half of it or three quarters of it. And then there were some questions from the audience virtually that we took at the same time. Interesting to hear, you know, we're all kind of in the same boat with COVID. Uh, we're all interested, obviously, in the legislative session because we all are looking for some assistance and some of our infrastructure concerns and things like that. Of course, the larger cities have a little bit, some, some extra differences, but it was still interesting to listen to what everybody's concerns and, uh, conversation was about. So glad, glad Horace is the first year we got to participate in the FM chambers, state of the cities, and I appreciate them letting us, uh, be heard. Uh, be up there on the stage with the rest of the mayors in the metro and, uh, I'm just glad we're able to do that. So that was a, that was fun event and I'm, I'm glad we're going to be doing this on a yearly deal. Only other thing I had to, the COVID numbers in town, the last, uh, update we got from the state was that in the zip code of five eight oh four seven, we have around eight active cases currently in play right now. Um, we'll see how things look next week, but if the numbers are there or going down. I think, uh, this might be our last Zoom meeting for a little while. We'll bring everybody back to City Hall. I would prefer to have the, uh, the meetings like that. These are okay, but, uh, I'd still rather have people being able to come in and we talk face to face as opposed to on virtual. So we'll see, we'll make it probably a judgment call on that here next week when I get some more numbers from the state. So other than that, I'll pass it over to Sarah. What have you got, Sarah? I know you're new, so I'll just see if you got anything you want to chime in with here.
I can honestly say that, uh, it has been quite a challenge, meeting with all the folks I need to meet with and digesting all of the information I need to digest and getting feedback from some of our local residents on certain specific things. Um, this has been a trip. Um, so I don't have a portfolio report, but I wanted to tell you something that, uh, I actually received as an announcement from the Garrison Divergent Conservancy District six days ago. Um, it says, congratulations to the recipients of the fall twenty twenty round of Garrison Diverging, Diversion Matching Recreation Grants. And I posted this out on my Facebook page because it says that, uh, the Horace Park District was awarded money in grants. Um, matching recreation grants for the phase two development of the Meadowlark Park, which is, uh, over in, I believe, the Lost River Development, if I'm correct. So, um, that tells me that someone's been doing some grant work and we were successful in getting something. So, um, outside of the planning and zoning portfolio reports that I am just going to be embarking on here, I hope to have one in the next meeting. I wanted to share this because I was very excited when I saw this news. Good work, guys.
Yep, that, that was a good thing, definitely. Um, yeah, and, and welcome to the, uh, the council, Sarah, and I know you're going to be drinking out of a fire hose here for the next couple, three, four weeks, so. Yep, I, I, I understand. So anyway, like I said, welcome to the, welcome to the council.
Thank you.
Dave, what do you got?
Uh, first of all, I would like to welcome Sarah as well. I know we said it before, but it's great to have a full council again and appreciate all your support, uh, for this community and the work that you're doing. Um, I do not have anything specific right now, um, other than just to reiterate that, uh, as of this year now, uh, Horace is the chairman of the MetroCog. Um, executive board and, uh, um, committee, so I will be as a president, um, of that, uh, or chairman of that board for MetroCog, um, starting here in twenty twenty-one for a year.
Congratulations, Dave.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, no good, Dave, because that's, uh, one of those boards that we, we have to have that type of, we need representation on and it's great that you're where you're at. So appreciate your efforts on that as well. Um, Chelsea, you've got anything?
Um, I will say thanks for your hard work, Dave, on that board as, um, also I think that's so important. So that is definitely appreciated and welcome, Sarah. I'm happy to have you and I'd love to sit down with you at your next meeting with Brent and we can all chat together. So I'll talk to you soon.
All right, Brian?
Uh, just a one item that I wanted to add, uh, and maybe it's a Britain or a question for you and Brenton is around the, the bonding bill. Uh, the, the bill that's coming up, are we crafting as a city, uh, a letter of support, uh, for that bonding bill? Uh, that's being considered now for the legislature, I'm assuming because that will affect us, so. I, and we've been in contact with any of our state representatives to make sure that we, they understand that this is something that's really important to us and we need to make sure that they are, uh, backing us up or what, what they need from us, right?
Right. So I don't know, uh, if everybody's aware of this, because this has been changing almost constantly in the last couple of weeks. But the bonding bill that was presented to us when we met with the league these last Thursday is no longer in play. Uh, there was a new one that got dropped last night. Um, we were aware of it this morning. We're reviewing it right now to, to see where it's going to go. The word on the street is there's going to be changes to it, but this is supposedly a better version of the bill than the one that they presented prior, so. We still have to review it a little bit more. They have specified some dollar amounts to certain communities. We're not on that one because our projects are smaller. This is some of the bigger, uh, ones, so, um, again, this is just a proposal. There will be modifications to it, but we are going to be in contact with our legislators um, on that and maybe get some more clarification in a couple of areas. Um, but yeah, we will probably be supporting a bonding package because for our growth and what's going on in our city. That will benefit us greatly, so we are going to, we are going to work with them to try and make sure something like this gets passed.
So just so you're aware, yes, I believe it was yesterday was the deadline for bills to be introduced by legislators. Now, after this point, very few bills can be introduced. Because each legislature could only introduce so many bills. Uh, it's a lot harder for anything to be thrown at them now. So we're trying to keep track of a moving target, obviously. You'll hear a lot of talk of, you'll probably hear quite a bit of update here in the next upcoming meetings about during my update about here's where we're at legislative session wise or here are some of the different things going on. Uh, the League of Cities has on their website, different bill, you know, summaries of different bills that impact the cities. Uh, there are quite a few bills that are being proposed that do have impacts on our cities. So we are going to be paying attention to them quite a bit. The bonding bill is just one example and until, and I don't even know for sure if there's another bonding bill that was presented, but just the other day, you know, last week, there are two bonding bills already submitted. And it sounds like there are some negotiations that have occurred and I don't know if they consolidated them into one or if it was a third bill mixed in, so we're trying to get that straight. Um, there's also quite a few other bills that are definitely going to be of interest to the city. Uh, so we'll be keeping you updated on that as they come about and come to us.
That's what I was a bit worried about is some of the deadlines that are coming up. Uh, if we need to submit letters and I don't know, we're doing that as a city or we, you know, we need to do, to do that as, as, you know, the council. You know, offering letters of support or, you know, in, in opposition to any of those bills that are out there, so. Looking for, you know, we'll, we'll have to keep tabs on that on a regular basis and if we need to participate in other ways, we can.
So one of the things, yeah, I'll just, one of the things that we're currently doing too is League of Cities, we have an update with them every, I want to say it's Friday afternoon. What they do is they give us a rundown, the cities, a rundown of what bills will be affecting municipalities. You know, either directly or even if it's an indirect one, they give us a rundown on the lists and then they also give us when the deadline is for uh, sending in, you know, either letters of support, letters of opposition or just wanting to talk, you know, get up and speak in front of them virtually. And so there's, there's, we are staying in contact with this. Some of the bills affect the larger cities, not so much us, but it's still in play that we're going to be paying attention to. It gives us a little heads up so that we can prepare if we do need to do some letters or to get ahold of our legislators and let them know that yea or nay type of thing. So, uh, and that'll be going on every week from now till the end of the legislative session. So Brenton and I and probably maybe some others will be participating in those calls, so. Yeah. A lot of stuff going on.
We will have, and just also, so everybody's aware, we will have situations where we're able to come to council, uh, get update and say, council, where do you stand on this? And we may be able to have a letter or testimony or anything as a representative of the city as a whole, like here's the state council view. Or maybe here's the view of the city from, you know, like Cory, Cory's perspective or from the city as staff side or something, depending on the topic and how quick we need to respond.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times they'll set the schedule the week before for testimony and hearings. And sometimes we have to move really quickly. I may get an email from the league, the city saying, hey, we need you guys to reach out to legislators. You know, within the next day. You know, within the next day and other times we may have more time to react, so. It's a. Definite, very busy upcoming. I, I'd like to say just a couple of months, but it'll probably be a lot longer in a couple of months, so.
Well, that was kind of my point to just raise awareness that over the next couple of months, it's, we're gonna have. Fair amount of activity. To be engaged in.
If, if I remember correctly from that conversation, there's over nine hundred bills that are gonna be, uh, introduced this go-around. That's a lot to sift through because some of them are good bills, some of them not so much. You still gotta filter through them all, so. Yeah, they're all gonna be busy and they're all gonna wanna move things along fairly quickly because of the volume that we're dealing with. Because they only have a window of opportunity to work into, so, yeah, we're gonna have to pay attention, so things don't miss us.
Yeah, exactly. That's it for me.
Okay, sounds good. Um. Anybody got anything else? I think that's probably. Where we're at. Um, Lucas, I know the next thing on the item here is that we're gonna go into executive session. Which basically means that this will just be limited to the, uh, council, uh, our. Lawyers and Jim will be involved in this, otherwise everybody else will probably be dismissed at this point. I know there's probably some preamble I'm supposed to read here, Lucas, and we're, this is a little different because we're, we're in a virtual. But, uh, I'm gonna say that we're, uh, we're gonna be going into executive session here.
We'll actually have a, a motion, uh, Mr. Mayor on that.
Okay.
So if you want me to go through my stuff right now or if you have anything else that you wanna say, otherwise.
Nope, you pick it up.
Okay, sounds good. So, so what we're looking for, uh, Mr. Mayor and members, uh, of the council is a motion. Uh, to go into executive session, uh, so I can provide, uh, attorney consultation. Uh, related to a lawsuit that the city is involved with, uh, with VR Development Company LLC versus the city of Horace. And we are looking to, uh, go into executive session pursuant to North Dakota Century Code. Section forty-four oh four nineteen point one subsection two, so a motion, uh, to that effect, to go into executive session.
Okay. Okay, Brian makes a motion to go into executive.
Second.
Second.
Who seconded? Seconds it, Dave.
Seconds, okay. All right, so Dave seconds it, so, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so with that, then we will go into executive session. We'll be back during.
I will stop the screen for Facebook and I will, um, stop the recording and we'll start a new recording. One minute.